There's no way that that 27 is going to be used this year. By the time we get somebody hired and that, I mean, I think, I think we're looking into October, late September, October. So that's, I mean, like I said, yeah, you can take away some of those weeks. But with us not knowing exactly the start date, I think these were going to be... Sure, like I said, that will be in a non-reverting fund, so we'll just carry over to 2020.
Give me a second. Any other questions, council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
The second item on the agenda, the first reading for ordinance 2019-20, additional appropriation for the fourth police car. Information, that car is still on order. We should be receiving it any time now. I'm asking for 9,000 to be taken from the public safety fund, which will equip that vehicle. Public safety, we did that with the first three this year. We were not sure if we were going to be able to get a fourth due to how Ford changed their ordering and that, but we were able to get that fourth one ordered. So all's on wait on the car as long as the equipment is approved to be taken from public safety.
Next motion to approve 2019-20.
Okay, second. Okay. Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
All right, next thing on the agenda is, I'm not needing approval. This is something that I came to you and spoke to you about a couple of months ago. We kind of realized that it was kind of a daunting task, so I wanted to make sure that we had all of our ducks in a row and have this thing planned, which is the Greensboro Police slash Greensboro Fire Department Youth Academy. This will probably be for the next school year, the fifth and sixth grade level. We're looking at maybe 15 to 20 the first year. Attached with this information, you will find the application and the liability waiver. The city attorney also has this information, which he will be looking over to make sure everything looks good on our end. You will also find a schedule of Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, which will be when the classes are held. It's a very busy schedule. Those are not set times. Like I said, we know that we're going to have to maneuver things. Like K9s, right now, we have them down for a half an hour. More than likely, they're going to go 45 minutes to an hour. Or the bomb squad, we have them down for 45 minutes. It might be longer. Columbus has already advised us that they will be more than happy to come down with bomb squad and talk to our guys about, or talk to the kids about that. So again, it's a great way that we're still, again, trying to get in with the kids. We're looking at having archery, possibly a fishing time. I know there's a thing on there that says firearms, don't be alarmed. That's not me. We're going to go out and have fun with that. It's just kind of ideas that we're thinking about. More than likely, for our first year, that's going to be a firearm site, a safety talk. But a lot of our officers are very interested with the fishing and the archery. Again, it will give these officers one-on-one time or one-on-two, three times with these kids, just to build a better relationship. So we are looking at possibly, if this is, everything looks good and approved later on for June of 2020, is what we're thinking about with that. So, any questions?
Swift Water Rescue.
Yes.
There we go.
Yeah, so like I said, fire department, fire chief and I talked briefly about this a couple of months ago. We just did a rough sketch. Like I said, he might need, or he might want a whole day or a lot more than a half a day. Because like I said, there's a lot there for the kids for the fire department, too. So lunch is planned out each day. Transportation-wise, if we do need some transportation, more than likely, I'll be contacting the superintendent of the schools. We have two officers that have been certified to drive their mini-buses. So drop off and pickup would be the responsibility of the parent, but anything during the day would be us with the mini-buses. So I think that is something that we can definitely get worked out, so.
Well, I'm really pleased about this coming about. Because like I told you, the Board of Works, I was at the state police, they have a prayer camp, and I was the first group that went through it. And...
No, I went, I went to state police prayer camp. That's what, in law enforcement.
That's what helped me get going, but then I became a fire.
And I'm hoping...
But it's public safety.
And I'm hoping in the future that we can actually open this up to high school age. They are starting a new course, the Greensboro High School Criminal Justice Course. This is being taught by law enforcement. So again, I'm hoping this will just kind of get the ongoing deal for our local community. That'd be a great thing, so.
Right, it's an awesome idea. Thank you for doing that.
Not a problem. Not a problem. Next thing, I know I handed out ComStat reports a couple of times. I've got a couple of questions of what are you talking about? Sorry, Darryl, you're going to sit through another meeting. Hopefully, the PowerPoint, that will work a little bit better than it did in Board of Works. The reasoning for this is, it's going to be kind of an explanation, because when you guys see some of my numbers for the budget and what we have already done this year, you might take a gas with air, but I will, I will explain why we're doing what we're doing and that. So ComStat is a new system that we have really gotten into with our officers in the past year. It reads off of the spillment data, which we use, communication uses, and so does the fire EMS, all public safety and that. And we have those tools in our vehicle and of course on station and that. We can do this for year-to-date, we can compare year-to-year and that. And what we're doing is, the ultimate goal we want to do is make sure we are putting officers in the right place at the right time. Or if there has been an uptick in certain areas in criminal activity, then we know better how to put officers in this location. Today, unfortunately, like I told Board of Works, was not a good day for us. Last night, we decided to have a lot of mischief. And last I know, we were at 45 calls by four o'clock. And I know that while we made a quick stop to eat, the radio was still going on with call after call after call. So I don't know if it's the back-to-school fever or what, but our officers, I'm guessing, will have probably close to 60 to 70 calls for a Monday. So while I'm explaining this, Assistant Chief McNeely will show you how we are showing our guys, this is a roll call, which will allow our officers to come in before shift, meet with their shift supervisor, and go through on what we are maybe seeing in the past week. And that, and one thing you're going to see in the past week, and actually the past month, is the Greensboro Police Department has made over 60 narcotics arrests. And that, we have shown in areas to where we are wanting to concentrate, and right now, we are seeing a big problem in our parks and in our hotels. So we have made numerous arrests in the parks and behind hotels and that. So again, we're wanting to make sure that we are providing the best service and that. This will show burglaries, thefts, and again, where they're at for the year. And that, one thing with the thefts that can be a little bit deceiving is, is the way that they're being coded this year. They're actually, thefts at Walmart are actually being coded as theft slash shoplifting, to where yet last year, they were just all thefts. So that is a very high number, and we see a very large increase in the 700 Greensboro Commons area. And that, and I will take a step back real quick, and I will let VP in. Assistant Chief McNeely, explain, once we can get onto Google Maps, where we can show where we're at. One thing we did was, in case we got a phone call from the public today saying, you know, were you guys just sitting on station and that? One thing we can show here today, because we already are in the information, is we wanted to check, okay, what were our officers doing through a certain period of time? And with this system, we can actually show where the officers were patrolling overnight. Our officers were all, were out all night, unfortunately, just not in the right area. And that happens and that. But again, we'll show you, like I said, how we're kind of getting into this form. Sheriff's Department is also able to use this and that, so they have definitely, you will see if the, when the sheriff presents his information to his council, that you're going to see an increase in their arrests and that also and that. So far this year, just real quick. Right there. And this year, you will see in the graph that I provided, we are up 35 narcotics arrests from where we were last year at this time. And we are also up 25 OWIs this year from where we were at this time last year. And I can tell you, since August the 1st, we have now surpassed last year's OWIs total and that. So one thing we wanted to make sure our officers knew is, we need to get out there, and we need to concentrate on operating while intoxicated, not only alcohol, but with narcotics also. We did just finish sending our third officer through drug recognition school, and we have made significant arrests with narcotics. So again, we want to show that our training that we are sending these guys to is paying off. We did say a couple of years ago, we are a very young department, and we knew we were going to have to send officers of training to, again, make sure we're providing good service to the community. And again, I think we're now starting to see that result by getting these officers back. Third K9 is up and going. He will be here at the next meeting. I want to kind of give him a little bit of a break, since he has had 12 weeks of intense training. And I could already tell you that Hercules is a really good dog, and we got a lot of compliments through the Indianapolis Metropolitan Police Department on not only K9, the K9 Hercules, but also Officer Tuttle and the job that he did with that K9. So I think we will definitely get a very large asset with that third purchase and that. So I should not be coming and asking for a fourth anytime soon, so just to let you know. So what Mike did was, he brought up the ComStat, and what we're seeing is the past, how many days, 30? Past 30 days, and these are all the drug offenses that we have been involved with, and mainly, all of these have been arrests. Again, we have put out emails to our guys. We're still seeing a very, more than what I want to see, activity of five blocks east and five blocks west of Main and Broadway. Again, we're, they're using alleys, different ways to transport or use these narcotics. And of course, another thing you will see, as we always say, is narcotics and thefts and burglaries are all in the end related. And as you see with property crimes, again, they're right there on the downtown area. So we have made sure that our guys are stepping up the patrols in the downtown areas, alleys and everything like that. We could also use a heat map to show the locations on where we're seeing a lot of criminal activity, and unfortunately, you see a lot of Greensburg. But that's, that's also showing your accidents, your traffic stops, and everything like that. Over the past month, I think we had 400 some traffic stops, and you will see that most of those are, they are covering the whole city. We're just not concentrating on Lincoln Street or 421. They're actually making traffic stops in, around the whole city and that. So like I said, I wanted to show you guys this. Again, you're going to see in, on the 21st, and like I said, you'll probably have a gas with air, that I will be negative in my overtime budget already. Again, though, part of that is training, but a lot of it is, we have seen a decrease in calls, and we've seen a decrease in arrests, but our, our quality is getting better and that. And unfortunately, like I tell the guys, 18 years ago, when I came on, we had, you know, our biggest vision was OWIs and public intoxication. Unfortunately, now, what we are seeing is, the guys are geared towards, unfortunately, the possession of meth, the possession of marijuana, and that, and that type of call. So again, that's going to accumulate overtime. Like I said, most of them entail cert warrants, so... But before I have to do any asking for money and that, I do, we have already sent down with our budget, and we know where we're going to move money to make sure that we can withstand the rest of the year, and again, to allow our officers to continue to do their job at a high level and that. One thing that we were, or that I was told about two weeks ago, which I hope this person is wrong, they, they are expecting, or they were expecting this year to be the worst year that we were going to see overdoses with juveniles and kids, or people in their early twenties. They have extended that. They think actually, next year, in our area and in your smaller cities, we are going to see possibly more overdoses with young adults and teenagers than we have ever seen and experienced in this area before. And unfortunately, that's because a lot of people are mixing synthetic narcotics with marijuana, with methamphetamines, and with heroin and that. So they're trying more stuff. We have had a couple of issues to where, we've had people cussing at our officers, but they've actually been cursing at electric poles, not the officers. They think the electric poles are their officers. And so they're, they're hallucinating and that, because what they are putting in their system. So I hope, like I said, I hope this person who does these studies is wrong, but that's the information that we're getting, is unfortunately, we may see an increase next year in what we're seeing in that. So does anybody have any questions for me? We will leave this up for after the meeting, if anybody wants to take a look or anybody has questions for us. But again, this is what we're doing to try to, again, provide a service and that. And I'll kind of piggyback, I'll skip over the next topic and that. Tomorrow's National Night Out. We encourage everybody from the community, if they can make it. Hopefully, we have enough food and that, but we're planning on having a good time. We're going to be at North Park between 5:00 and 8:00. And again, our main goal is just to have the kids to come out and have fun, but our, our actual number one goal is, we want the community to come out and talk to us. We want to know what problems they're seeing in their neighborhood, and, you know, just because they're talking to us doesn't mean that we're going to go and give their name out. It could be the non-stip and that. But again, we want to know what the citizens are seeing, so they can better help us do our job, because again, they're the ones that are seeing it more than what we are. They're hearing more than what we are. So we invite anybody to come out and, like I said, come talk to us and that, give us the information, and we will gladly disperse it to who we need to, so. Yeah, dogs will be there, so. But that's all I have.
Okay, are you going to talk about fireworks?
Yeah. Fireworks. So I provided you guys with information on the fireworks. Again, we do not have to make a decision this evening. I just wanted to kind of give you the, an update on the second page. I ran a report on what we are actually seeing around the time period of June 26th around July 11th. And a lot of that, I think, most of our fireworks calls were actually called in between those dates. Outside of that, I think maybe there was 11 fireworks calls outside of the, that two-week period, two-to-three week period. Again, I guess my, my question is, are we, is this something that we eventually maybe want to look for, or forward to putting something into place, or is there not enough of an issue? Again, we get a lot of shots fired calls that people think, and of course, it's fireworks and that, so some of the shots fired calls are actually going to be your fireworks calls.
I guess I thought we'd agree that we're going to come up with a draft ordinance, and we can take a look at it and move from there.
Right.
That's where I thought we were.
And that, yeah, that, I'll take the blame on that one. I will get that to you. We do, Kathy and I worked on ordinance and that, and it does give that specific time period. And that, I just want to, again, provide you with the updated with the actual fireworks calls and all that, but I will provide that to you. My apologies. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Now, Steve. Here. Okay, last month, you had a little confusion on the Hazmat Emergency Fund. There's a Hazmat Fund in the budget already, and it has $6,000 in it. And what Steve is wanting, that is to appropriate that to the budget, like the same thing as, as what we had earlier with the... With the... The Don't Save Building Fund. And so he only, he only had, I don't even know if he had any money in there showing, did he?
In which one?
In the Hazmat.
Yeah, there's about 6,000 something.
Well, I don't know, but what was in your budget? Didn't have anything good in your budget? So that's another one of those budget things that we'll need to talk about.
They missed it on the budget, and they put it in the budget.
So what we're asking is to appropriate that, 6,000.
Where are we taking, we're taking it from where in the budget to?
The Hazmat.
No, no, we're adding it to Hazmat, right?
No, it's, no, it's coming out of Hazmat. In the bank, we have that, in that fund in the bank. We have $6,000.
I thought you said you didn't have any money in the budget in that fund. That's, I'm confused.
Okay.
No, we didn't have any money in that fund. We're moving the money to that fund, so you can spend it to buy material, right?
No, I have money in the fund. I need permission to move it so I can use it.
From the bank.
From the bank, yeah.
To the budget. Yeah, we didn't appropriate it. The 6,000 was there, and that's what they used. Why, and all that. No, no, but that's why, you know, that's why I had, actually, I had something down here on the ordinance, because the one was, you guys talked about public safety funds. I mean, you switched.
I had a question.
Which one are we, which ordinance number are we talking about right now? We're talking about 2019-22. Because there already is a Hazmat Fund, we just need to transfer that money to the budget. Okay? And the other one, we'll cancel out, because we don't need that, because he has the money.
We don't need 21.
We don't need 21. Okay, so what I'm asking for is the ordinance 2019-22, additional appropriation for Hazmat Emergency Fund. Second?
It's 22.
Yes, it's 22. Okay. Any other questions? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you.
Just for clarity, do we need to vote? Do we need to make a motion to not approve 2019-21, just because it's on the agenda for clarity purposes? Yeah, okay. I make a motion that we withdraw, ordinance 2019-21.
Okay.
Just for clarity.
Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay. Awesome. When is our budget be? August 21st? Okay. So August 21st, 6:00 PM, if you're in the, playing the department. Also, Chief Bridges, would you want to talk about the railroad situation?
Forgot that mention. Yes, I forgot to mention this before we worked. One other thing that you noticed with that ComStat is the, the areas, again, downtown and along the 500 blocks, again, each way downtown. And a lot of that is, we are attributing possibly to the homeless that are living on the railroad tracks. This has been an ongoing issue for I don't know how many years. Both myself and the Assistant Chief has been in contact with numerous people, the railroad. We finally got contacted back last Thursday, and they have given us permission. We are acting as an agent of the railroad, and they have told us that they do not want anyone on their property. Last Friday, myself and Assistant Chief went and hung up signs, and starting tomorrow, if they're still there, they're getting thrown out. If they return, they're going to go to jail. And that, again, we are seeing too many issues back there, too much trash. We've had one death back there this year, and we have had another individual that wanted to commit suicide and was intoxicated and tried standing on the railroad tracks. Again, so we are taking this serious, again, because we don't want to see anything horrible happen back there again. So we will be taking care of the cleanup and getting them out of there. We've also contacted every single business owner who may own a little bit of property back there, and every single one of them have said that they do not want them on their property either. So again, that's one of the issues that we've heard a lot about, that, and we have finally gotten an answer back from the railroad. So that's what we will be doing. Thank you.
Jeff, what's the day of your off-term for the chamber?
August 16.
August 16?
August 16, right.
Okay. So you guys want to go play golf?
Yeah.
It's a good day. It's going to be a chamber day. You know that, it always does. I hurt brain like crazy last month, but anyway. We have good time anyway. Okay. Mr. Polley, would you like to talk about this project that you have coming this week?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. We've heard a lot from the chief tonight about the epidemic that we have in our city with the drugs. And I've kind of been working with some of these organizations. I think most of us in the room have had this type of thing hit us in our families. And so with that being said, on Saturday, Celebrate Recovery along with the Foundation of, Foundation for Recovery House and the Speranza House for Ladies, they are having a prayer walk starting at noon, and will go till 4:00 PM on Saturday. And I'd like the public to be involved in that, if you, if you can be. There'll be four sites that they'll be meeting at noon. One will be at the courthouse. Site number two is at the Speranza House, which is on 200 block of East Washington Street. Foundations for Recovery is on Moscow Road, right in front of Lifeline Wesleyan Church. And then the fourth will be at Rebecca Park. And there'll be specific maps and places that we'll be going on this prayer walk. And then at 4:00, there'll be a celebration back at the Lifeline Wesleyan Church, at which time, there'll be some refreshments and maybe a few talks or whatever. But the mayor has been so kind to say that Saturday will be Recovery Day. Make a proclamation, Saturday will be Recovery Day in Greensburg. So if you can support this, that'd be great. If you can walk, that'd be great, but kind of spread the word.
What's the day again?
This coming Saturday, which is?
10.
10. Any information, you can Facebook me or give me a call.
Okay. Okay, great. Well, if you all could go, that would become, or whatever, great. Chief has already talked about the problems that we have, so everything, you know, let's get together, try to fight this problem together. Board of Works, any information?
Board of Works information, we approved on the second, oh no, I'm sorry. Jeff Messer from the Tree City. Am I saying this right? I'm looking at the city council, Jim. Wow, it's been a long day. Computers crashed at work first thing this morning. Mark Harmon came. He's at the C, the C 26, Tree City, all festival. And we approved the, the closing of the streets for 920 and 921. Sarah Stein brought a contract for the labor standards for the water plant project, and this will be a total of $10,000. It's approved. Tara Hayden of ARA, the main street improvement, pay application number four, for $74,000, And she did tell us that the project is on pace, and we're hoping to see that done within the next 60 days, hoping. Chief Bridges came and he talked about what he talked about here. Chief Garrett brought a proposal that we purchased the property behind the fire station. It was offered to us for $500. We're initially making a part in the lot, out of that, that was passed. City engineer Ron May brought a contract document for the paving projects. I won't go all over those projects, but if anyone on council or anyone would like to see what areas are being targeted, please come see me up to the meeting, I'll be glad to share those with you. Jeff Smith, Sand Creek Forest Main payout, $73,017.95. That was approved. Mark Klosterkenter brought quotes. He had two quotes for replacement of flatbed trucks, 2008 flatbed that is being replaced. We have two bids, one for $35,004, and another bid for $33,000. I believe that's five. So it was about $1,900 difference. We gave Mark the approval, along with the mayor, to look at those and decide whichever one would be, because they both didn't have...
because they both didn't have exact specs. And let's see, we also approved an employee request for extension for unpaid leave. We approved that for an additional thirty days. And MatTech has been, I'll let you talk about that Mayor. And that's it.
Door security system, we put an N one in, or a N one out. And so we asked them for some extra money from their budget, from the Board of Works to help pay for that. And that's what that was. But we did have, like he was talking about, four projects that we're looking at that we sent in to the Crossing, the matching grants. Over about five hundred thousand dollars for the projects. So we just kind of made the best to go ahead and start this process because we should know in the next couple of weeks about if we, how much we got. Ever did? So that's a matching grant that we're going after that, so. Any questions, guys?
Carver Street intersection.
Oh yes.
The Carver Street intersection, Mark, you want to talk to that?
It's thirty-thirty morning.
Oh yeah.
Carver Street, will we close to the north side? To the north side of the intersection, there will be no access anywhere to that north side for approximately fourteen days.
Up to Ninth Street now.
Is that Ninth? Ninth, first one to come through from Moscow. So in other words, you'll have to, if you want to go anywhere to the northwest side of County Road, you have to use Michigan Avenue or Broadway, Smith Road. Because Carver will be shut down that north side. Now you can come from the south side if you want, if you can't go anywhere. Thirty morning, probably at seven to eight A M.
You got your, that's pretty important, you got your license.
I suggest they close at Eleventh Street for the east also.
He promised to pick me up in the yard, he's a truck.
He's not riding with a cab.
Okay. Anything else, council? Okay, second? All in favor, Zach?